Mr. Lego.
Mrs. Zissinger.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Neeney.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have informed Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. It's time I'd like to request an appointment for a temporary chairperson if I have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Scott Koschko as the temporary chairperson for Mr. Lord.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Chair will now accept nominations for the office of president.
I nominate Dr. J. Trey for the presidency.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
I'll make a motion to close the nominations, second by the office of president.
Motion by Dallas Leonard and second by Mr. Petrusi. The nomination is to be closed for the office of presidents. If there are no objections, the chair will conduct a vote, a voice vote. All those in favor of Dr. J. Trey for president? Can we do one by one?
No.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Dr. Trey has been duly elected president for 2013. Congratulations.
I think so, thank you very much.
We put Scott Koschko, as you say. Dr. Koschko, excellent job.
Thank you, I enjoyed it. It was a...
You handled everything in one persistent situation. You handled it very professionally. Hats off to you.
Appreciate that, I enjoyed it, and it was a great learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's exciting to be able to hold a gavel for real. It's a vice president not being able to do. So, we'll continue on with the, this phase of the organization meeting. And the chair will now accept nominations for the office of vice president.
I nominate Tony Issing.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
I make a motion that the nominations be closed for the office of vice president.
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, second by Mr. Noel.
Questions?
Questions being called for. If there are objections, the chair will conduct a voice vote. All those in favor of Tony Issing for vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Tony Issing, you have been duly elected vice president for 2013. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a look at this gavel, you're never going to get to see it. In this particular case...
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
I have in my trophy chest at home a broken gavel that I broke during my tenure as president. There's a gold one.
We're not going to make a seating adjustment at this time. Mrs. Zissinger, she'll take a role later on that relates to the nominations and the seconds which we'll advise everybody about. And then other duties will be dealt with at the next meeting in January. Right now, we're going to move into a motion that relates to the board meetings. Now, just adding to this, the motion will address meetings being held in the library at Pentrafford High School, Harrison City, Pennsylvania, beginning at seven o'clock, unless otherwise noted. And you'll see in the, an agenda that has moved quite a bit. And all meetings are open to the public, any changes will be posted on the district's website. So, at this time, may I have a motion to establish the date, time, and place for regular meeting, monthly board and superintendent's information committee meetings for 2013?
May I have a motion?
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question? Question was called for. This will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. I may have a motion to authorize the secretary of the board of school directors, Brett Lago, to use the facsimile signature of Patrick J. Trey, the newly elected president of the board of school directors, to further authorize the secretary to filing required documents with the Department of Education. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi, second by Mr. Leonard.
Question?
Question was called for. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
May I have a motion to appoint Dr. J. Trey as the district legislative council representative, and Mr. Bruce Noel as the alternative?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Neeney.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zissinger. Question was called for. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. We now reach the adjournment point of the reorganization meeting. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I make that motion.
Mr. Leonard, seconded by...
Second.
Second by Mr. Kachasik. Do we have a question? Questions called for, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And this meeting is adjourned, the first part of the meeting will be the organization meeting at seven twenty-six. Can I catch my breath before we reorganize and start into the regular meeting? Mrs. Zissinger, as the vice president, I could ask you at this particular time, as we proceed to the motions, if you would recognize and acknowledge all motions and all seconds. Thank you, Mrs. Zissinger. All right, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Pentrafford School Board at seven twenty-seven. Mr. Lovett, do you have a roll call?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Zissinger.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Neeney.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have informed Mr. President.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November twelfth meeting?
Motion. Second.
And the motion was by Mr. Leonard and seconded by Mr. Petrusi. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. At this stage, we turn over the information, session of the meeting, to Dr. Butler.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Our student union representative, Garrett, there you are. The student union has been preparing for the first Red Up the Stands event. This event will take place on the doubleheader games with Norwin on January fifteenth. All fans will be encouraged to wear red to support the American Heart Association. The pre-sale for the t-shirts for this event will begin next week, the tenth, and continue until the twenty-first. On another note, the first food committee played extremely well with Mrs. Duff. The students discussed multiple ways to improve the menu within the new federal guidelines. The new menu items will be added after the holiday break. Recently, Ms. Stefkovich's business management classes concluded the t-shirt sales for the American Cancer Society. Two teams competed for raising money for this great cause and earned a total over seventy-two hundred dollars. This is a record for the event. Thank you. Thank you, Garrett. Our next section, excuse me, we're just getting used to the new procedures up here. Next is the student of the month, and our first student of the month comes from Mr. Maraski.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. I'd like to introduce the elementary student of the month from McCullough Elementary School for December, first grader Waylon Fettey. Come on up, Waylon. Stand right there, we got you. Waylon is the son of Jason and Cassandra Fettey, and Waylon has a two-year-old brother, Cash. When speaking with Waylon's parents, they expressed that Waylon is a very caring and respectful boy. Mom stated, he gets along with everyone, and everyone enjoys Waylon. Mom also let me know that Waylon is an exceptional listener. Some of the things that Waylon likes are Ninja Turtles, dinosaurs, and music. As a matter of fact, Waylon plays in his father's band, the East Coast Turnaround. Correct? Something that I'd like to mention is that Waylon was born with a hearing deficit, and his parents explained to me that there are certain signs that we take for granted that Waylon cannot hear. Waylon has hearing aids, which he received at the age of four, and according to Mrs. Rakowski, Waylon's hearing specialist here from the district, Waylon is the hardest-working student she has ever had the opportunity to work with in the district. She was also quick to mention that Waylon is very kind and a compassionate student. Speaking to Waylon's teachers, they identified hardworking, cooperative, and determined as three character traits that he displays each and every day at school. While he previously struggled with hearing and academic progress, he is making huge strides in an effort to read independently. Last year, Waylon attended kindergarten corner as a weekly, as well as weekly speech and hearing lessons. Waylon was being introduced to new sounds as he had not used much-needed hearing aids for the earliest part of his life. Waylon has worked hard and continues to work incredibly hard to learn letters, sounds, and sight words. This past October, Waylon began using direct instruction in a small group setting. Since he began this program, he has made leaps and bounds in his quest to be an independent reader. Moreover, his anxiety to read has diminished and his confidence has soared. His hand is now constantly raised during class. Speaking with Waylon, he likes to play hide-and-seek, tag, and just run around when he's at home. He also enjoys playing music and singing in his dad's band. Waylon let me know that in school, he enjoys math, learning, and reading, and reading, and reading. It would not surprise me in the future, when Waylon is here at the high school, that he will be a huge success with his work ethic, ethic, and desire to learn. One thing is for sure, he has the right name for what will be his own country band. Waylon, I want to congratulate you on being the student of the month, and I'm looking forward to our Friday reading here in the office. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Waylon, on behalf of the board. It's a tremendous thing. And I just have one more thing to say. You're it.
Waylon, tell them what is gavel.
Go ahead. Thanks, Waylon. Good job. Next student of the month, Mrs. Garner.
Hi, I'd like to introduce you to Anna Zoljak. Go on up front, Anna. Anna is an eighth grade student at Trafford Middle School, and she's the daughter of Stephen and Teresa Zoljak. She has two older brothers, Jake, who is at Greensboro, correct? And Luke, who is at UMass. Anna has always been an excellent student. She loves to read and has been active in the Spectrum offers of program every year where they go to Seaton Hill, they read multiple books, and then they're quizzed on the knowledge that they, from the books. She has been swimming competitively since she was five years old and continues to swim competitively. She practices four to five days a week, and she'll swim at the high school level next year. She's played basketball, volleyball. She has taken private violin lessons from the age of five. She loves to go to the family's camp in the summer and fall months. She tubes and rides the jet ski. She recently earned her boater's license and can drive the jet ski on her own. She's been a volunteer for the food drive for Level Green Women's Club. She's been an alder server for five years in St. Regis. She has perfect attendance, perfect grades. She likes science and literature the best. She would like to be a physician's assistant when she goes off to college. And I asked her, I said, Anna, why do you, why are you like you are? And she said she just does things because they need to be done, and it's the right thing to do. She does like to hang out with her friends, and the best thing about Trafford Middle are the advanced classes, that she gets to do things that she wouldn't normally get to do. The teachers tell me that she's mature. She's the one that always has the answer at the end of the day while the others dance around. And she's a dry sense of humor. She just gets it and on levels that most kids don't. She's intelligent, above the fray, polite, and overall a good egg. So, congratulations, Anna. Very good.
We're good. Congratulations on behalf of the board. Thank you, Mark.
We'll get some pictures with everybody here after our last student of the month, which will be in high school, of course, Mr. Englis.
Ryan, we have Ryan Satir from the high school. Ryan is here with his mom and dad, Joe and Susan, and Ryan has two brothers, Adam and Matt, and smile for him. That's why Ryan is student of the month. Everybody knows Ryan, he always has a huge smile on his face. He's a very active kid, involved with CAP, Student Athletic Training. He teaches swim lessons. He's a lifeguard, stage manager for the Drama Guild, so if you saw The Hobbit this weekend, behind-the-scenes guy with Ryan makes sure all the lights and sound and everything else was working. He's at the school twelve, fourteen hours a day, working with his activities, student training, keeps him very busy. He's energetic, always willing to help anyone he needs. He's the president of CAP, and he actually leads a group of students to deliver food once a month to residents of the Genet High Rise. Last year, he was recognized as one of our Nobel Warriors. And I believe that Ryan was one of the only students in the high school who is a certified CPR instructor for the American Heart Association. Can you verify that? Is that true? That's wonderful. Here's what his teachers say about him. He's outgoing, ambitious, conscientious, he's positive personality, and his passion is infectious. He is full of high energy and is a leader among his peers, he has a positive attitude. He's hardworking and mature for his age, he's responsible, he only needs to be told twice, which he knows is a rare trait among high school students. One teacher said, I would love to clone Ryan, I would want a thousand more students like him. He's never negative, he has a natural optimistic outlook on life, he's a bright spot in everyone's day. One common theme that I got from all of his teachers is that, you know, he has a big heart and he's always willing to help out others, his peers. If someone needs help, he graciously gives it. The way he respects and cares for others is very admirable. So, that was a common theme, and that says something about his character and how he was brought up, so that's something he'd be very proud of. Ryan has an interest in the medical field. He plans on attending Slippery Rock, where he will major in athletic training. Mr. Cooper, the athletic trainer, has said that Ryan has more energy, work ethic, and people skills than any college grad that he has ever seen or worked with. So, he, he has high hopes for him, and he knows that he will do very, very well. Had the pleasure of working with Ryan's mom and dad the past couple of years on our scholarship foundation. I can tell you, the apple does not fall far from the tree. So, there you are with that. Nice job, Ryan, congratulations.
This is especially a pleasure for me. I've known Ryan for a long time, and every time I go in the building, anywhere in this district, he's always there. And our exchange is always saying, what are you doing here? And he says, what are you doing here? It's a good meeting. Congratulations, Ryan. My pleasure.
If we could get everybody together somewhere for pictures, we had a little rearrangement of the scenery here a little bit, maybe down in the pit somewhere if we can get all three students of the month. And again, thank you for coming, and thank the parents for doing a great job raising these great kids. So, you want to go down there with Dr. Trey and we'll get some pictures. Wherever Georgia wants to go is where the pictures are going to be taken. She is the boss. Okay, parents, again, thank you for coming. If you are here for your student of the month, feel free to leave. I don't mean that in a bad way, I'm just saying there might be other things that you want to do. You are more than welcome to stay too, because we have very informative meetings. I think they all left it. President, that ends my information.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. At this time, we'll go into the recognition of visitors, and bear with me, we have a more regimented audience recognition code, so in, in audience recognition, following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address, fourth question, a board member individually. I may interrupt you, your statement, if your statement is too lengthy, it's personally directed, becomes abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. If there are any district residents who would like to be recognized for a comment this time, we actually have five signed up. The only thing we ask is if there's a possibility that you're dealing with the same issue, and you can defer to someone to summarize for you periodically, we've had a long list of people, we've had that occur, and people have been very accommodating, we do appreciate that. But you certainly have the full right to speak for your five minutes, and we highly encourage that. To start off with, we recognize Sally Bradley.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Sally Bradley, eight forty-seven, State Route one thirty in Level Green. And my question is, is Miss Pope ill? Because I haven't seen her since October, and I might send her a get-well card if she's ill.
That's something that, there's all sorts of rules and regulations regarding what we can say and not say about someone's health, so I'm not going to comment on that in public.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Bradley. I'd like to go at this time to Angela Novak.
Hi, I'm Angela Novak, one thirty-two, Arm Drive, Level Green, PA. I'm here concerning the prom date. It's actually on Orthodox Good Friday this year. Orthodoxy, though, is a small population in our school. We deserve the same amount of like respect and consideration as other religions. Orthodoxy, maybe a small population here, but it's the second largest religion, Christianity, form of Christianity in the world. There are approximately ten Orthodox Christians in this school, and that I know of. And if their, if prom is continued to be on our Good Friday, these students would not be able to attend, neither would their possible dates, and many people would be impacted by their absence. Good Friday for Orthodoxy is probably the most sacred day in our faith. We, we are mourning the death of Jesus all weekend, beginning that day. It'd be basically sacrilegious of us to celebrate. So, I would like to request a change of date. If the venue that we currently use is available for another date, I would not mind helping to find another venue or another date. I know for a fact that Ramada and Greensburg is very flexible with our situation, and also today, I've gotten the opinion of several Pentrafford High School students with regards to the situation, and they, they told me they are all very supportive of the situation, and they would not mind a date or venue change. They would actually almost appreciate it, they'd have a little bit of variety in the school. So, in conclusion, I would like to request a change due to the Orthodox celebration of Good Friday.
Is that it, Angela?
Yes.
It's a pleasure to see you, and we thank you for your contribution, and we certainly do soul searching, we knew the entire circumstance, and I know it's a difficult decision, no matter what, because you're in such high regard, particularly from your high school principal. It's been a separate high school principal, but I'm doing the best we can with it. This time, I'd like to go to, is it Emily Parabuznik?
Yeah, that's right. Well, just like Angela, I'm along the lines of I would like the prom date changed. So, my name is Emily Parabuznik, six thirteen, Sixth Street, Trafford. I'm a junior here at Pentrafford High School, and a member of St. John's Orthodox Church in East Pittsburgh. I'm one of many people who will be impacted by this year's prom date being on May third. However, this is no way about me, but my faith and beliefs, which is Orthodoxy. In school, we learn to express ourselves and stand up for what we believe in, and this is certainly something I believe should change. As we know, May third is also Orthodox Christians' Good Friday. Good Friday is a solemn day for us, it's an emotional day, and it's like we lost our Father. The way you could like see it is, would you go to a party after you were out of viewing for somebody you love, like your dad or your grandfather? Like, we couldn't go to prom after church services for that, or even before, because we grieve that Holy Power begins, and even that week. The way we're brought up is faith before anything else in the world, so if we were given a decision between going to prom and going to church, we would certainly pick church over anything. We don't want to turn our back on our faith. As Angela said, we are a small population community, but we are the second largest Christianity group in the world. I would just like also say that at Gateway a few years ago, they changed their prom date to accommodate Jewish, Jewish students, and this year, they also changed their prom to accommodate Orthodox students. When it comes to making a decision that affects the student body like prom, I would ask for you to keep Orthodox and all other religions in consideration, and thank you for your time.
Emily, thank you much. Thank you very much. Also, I sense a strong faith and commitment to what we think is right and correct and what we believe in, and that has to be admired, no matter what comes out in this decision This time, we'll move to Linda Novak.
Thank you very much. Linda Novak, one thirty-two, Arm Drive, Level Green. I'm really touched by these girls. I've known them both very long, but they really, really pull their hearts, and I'm really proud of them. They are right. Gateway had the same situation just this year, and it was changed immediately when they realized their oversight. I agree with these girls, but I also found, as an educator myself, it's very important to recognize what our state saw. So, I went to the Pennsylvania Department of Education's website, and it has a webpage devoted to classroom management and respecting differences. The page begins by saying, and I quote, "Teachers must learn to respect differences and teach their students to be the same. One of the major objectives of a teacher is to manage her students in a fashion that teaches and encourages them to respect differences." It goes on to say, "Classrooms have become quite diversified. There are children from various cultural backgrounds, and I must present this question to the board and to you, President. How can we expect our teachers to implement this in their classrooms if the board doesn't set an example?" So, I highly appreciate you listening to us and recognizing our dilemma, and for the future, consider this may affect, you know, the Jewish community or some others, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, we appreciate your, we call it a challenge, but it's a, we have to deal with and absorb and reflect. Pat, last individual is Rich Sopokanik.
Yes, Rich Sopokanik. Thank you, and also, I'm here on the same issue, I'd like to compliment him also, very well spoken. I'm going to come at it from a different point of view again. Thank you for your time in having us here this evening, we appreciate the venue, and having you speak on something that's very important to us. We know we're a small group here speaking tonight, but we believe we represent, you know, quite a few, and this isn't just about our request to you on this specific issue, but this, this really covers anyone's issue in regards to their religious belief in this matter, something that we hold very high. And I think, you know, this speaks for itself, just in the fact that we, we believe this much in something that is sacred to us. You know, again, my name is Richard Sopokanik, eight seventy-two, Meadow Brook Road. My father was an immigrant, as my, my mother's parents, I should say, their parents, they came here for their faith. They came here to be able to practice their faith and be able to speak freely of who they were. My mother is a convert into the Orthodox religion. My wife, who sits behind me, is a convert into the religion. We have many converts, and we believe in what we, what we stand for. My father was commissioner in his township years ago. We established a scholarship fund in his name, in honor of what he stood for, which is basically civic duties, you know, academic achievement, believing in volunteer activities, and basically having roots. A tree without roots dies, and this is really, you know, part of who we are, you know, our roots. I graduated from this high school, it was gone for about twenty years, came back after twenty years to raise my family here. The reason was, for this exact reason that we're here tonight. We came back for the most sacred thing, which is family. Next was community, and the last is our faith. All three of them are wrapped up in what we're here to speak on tonight. You know, we ask for your help, the bottom line here. We can't do this without you. We don't know if there was one or if there was many, in making a decision on how this happens. Basically, it can't happen without you. It is a small gesture, but again, we believe it crosses many facets, whether it be a religious facet or, or something other. And lastly, it is about the kids, you know. We have recognition of children here this evening. We're here in an educational institution. This is about the children, and I think you would agree that having a child come to you well-balanced, well-prepared, you know, having a good financial, I'm sorry, a good religious... well-balanced, well-prepared, you know, having a good financial, I'm sorry, a good religious background, and being able to, you know, present themselves with integrity, as these children have this evening, is what you want. And this is what we're really talking about. This isn't selfishness. This is about something that we believe in, and we believe transcends the single issue of our particular holiday. So, you know, we ask for your help, and we hope that you have open minds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of your contributions, and we'll certainly, certainly deal with it as best we can. Thank you very much for attending this evening. Do we have anybody else that's, that may have overlooked? All right, let's step from there into the payment of bills, may have a motion to get approval to pay the list of bills for the month of December.
She have a motion by Rich?
Second.
Second by Matt.
Question was called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. This time we'll step into old business.
No old business.
No old business. This time, entertaining an executive session. New business, athletics and extracurricular, Mrs. Zissing.
Yeah, first of all, I want to make two comments. Over the last couple of weeks, I had the pleasure of attending the girls' volleyball banquet and the girls' field hockey, girls plus one, boys field hockey. Girls volleyball, I enjoyed both events. The girls' volleyball team was P.I.A. runner-up, and the girls' field hockey team was W.P.I.A.L. runner-up. Congratulations to both teams on a job well done. I also want to recognize that this is the tenth year for the field hockey team, and they have come a long way from their, from their beginnings, and they have done a wonderful job, and I'm proud of them all. So it's my pleasure to attend the banquet. Okay, on to business. Move to accept the following resignation, Susan Danilo, as assistant varsity girls' softball coach.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question was called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Okay, move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Art Harvey, assistant varsity girls' softball coach. Tracy McDonald, seventh and eighth grade, assistant girls' volleyball coach at Penn Middle School.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Let's step into budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
I would like to report to the senior president.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Buildings and grounds and safety, Mr. Leonard.
I also have no report to the senior president.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Mr. Stovar.
Nothing this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Food service, Mr. Neemek.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Neemek. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of this substitute teachers, support personnel for the month of December two thousand and twelve.
Second. Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Penn State High School program as tied for two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, this year.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following intern assignments. University of Pittsburgh cooperating professional, Mr. Greg Carazia. Interns Pamela Zachal, area supervisor of special education. The dates are January second to May sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following student teachers and pre-student teacher assignments. St. Vincent College cooperating professional, Katie Caruso. Student teacher Megan Stofar, grade one, January fourteenth to February eighth, two thousand and thirteen. And Amy Kelly, St. Megan Stofar, grade three, February eleventh to March thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. University of Phoenix cooperating professional, Mr. Marty Casper. Student teacher Nigel Walts, area grade four. Dates January second, two thousand and thirteen, to March twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen. And if you're seeing Hill, cooperating teachers Kelly Kilbough. Pre-student teachers, Melissa Chaplin, grade two. Dates fifteen hours, during December tenth, this year, to January eighteen, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following FMLA leave request. Nancy Beck, secretary at Penn Middle School, intermining FMLA from December third this year to February, to December second, two thousand and thirteen. Unpaid leave as needed.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Mrs. Zissing.
Yes.
Mr. Kachasik.
My name is Dane.
Dr. Koschko.
Yes.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Neemek.
Yes.
Mr. Petrucci.
Yes.
Mr. Stovar.
Yes.
Dr. Trey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move to accept the following retirement resignation, designation, sorry. Vicky Doyle, teacher at Sunrise Elementary School effective January eighteen, two thousand and thirteen.
Second.
Second by Scott.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
So I may.
Thank you, Mr. Petrucci. Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, which I'll continue on in that committee. I move to accept it at the following minutes in the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, November fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Second.
Second by Scott.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Move to appoint the following Recreation Board representatives, Penn Township rep, Mr. Kachasik and Dr. Koschko. Trafford rep, Mr. Petrucci, and Pennborough rep, Dr. Petrywitz.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed, no. Motion carried. Move to appoint the following as Penn Township Area Recreation Committee Representatives for PTAR, Mr. Petrucci and Mrs. Zissing.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. That's all I have. Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Stovar.
Move to approve the resolution limiting any financial year, two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and fourteen, tax increase to an amount no greater than the Pennsylvania Department of Education index. The copy of the resolution will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote.